Evening and welcome to the April 5th City of Half Moon Bay City Council Meeting. And welcome NET class number one. I'd like to start our meeting with roll call, please.
Councilmember Muller?
Here. Here. We have a quorum and councilmembers Penrose and Rodak are here this evening. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to acknowledge that whoever was the leader who got us a new eagle on our flag, I appreciate that because we had a broken flag for a long time, so we're happy to have that. The first item on our agenda this evening are proclamations. We have a proclamation for the West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week. Who is here to receive the proclamation this evening? Do we not have one to receive? Alex, I'm going to present this to Alex Kojikian. I don't have to present to anybody. We'll just see that they get to it. Thank you. So we have a proclamation for mosquito abatement awareness. As we know, it's very serious business and we want to acknowledge that, the work to have mosquito control and to help prevent the diseases associated with that. Next, we have the graduation of Half Moon Bay's first class from the Community Academy, the NET Academy. And I want to acknowledge this class. So now it's time to start the final exam. So we'll have 45 minutes. No, I just want to acknowledge everybody who took the time to participate in the class, time out of your busy schedule, four weeks, four evenings. You didn't have to do it and you did it. It was, you're there and when you're there doing that, everybody else was at home, just relaxing. So really appreciate it and hopefully out of that, you've got new insights into your city and your community. Hopefully out of that, you made new friends. And hopefully out of that, you will find a way that works great for you to be a part of the community and more immersed in the community, more engaged in the community than you were before. And when you see stuff going on, you say, why does that take as long as it takes? Maybe have a little bit more insight. How does that work? Maybe a little more understanding. And if you have questions, and hopefully now you know exactly who to turn to, to get some answers. So what I'm going to do is ask the City Council to join me in front of the dais. And I'm going to call everybody up and award you your certificate from the program and then we'll line up on the right here for a photograph together. I'm going to do it instead of my council, because who needs you guys? Thank you.
All you have tonight.
Okay. Coming around. Thank you. The Community Academy is NET, N-E-T, which stands for, who knows? You're failing. A microphone. So for those of you who don't know, the program is NET, stands for Network Engage and Transform. And this is the program where members of our community signed up to participate in the first ever Community Academy and worked to learn about city operations, about administration, public safety, recreation, the library, and community development. Working together, doing some role-playing and problem-solving, getting to know one another. We are currently planning our next iteration of the program and we'll announce that the next iteration of the program will be conducted entirely in Spanish and that'll be great for our Latino community. And I hope to see this at our future budget discussion so we can continue it in future years as well. And so with that, I want to thank everybody for participating and I want to award the certificate for the participants. And to acknowledge, you did more than you had to. And that's what it takes in our community to have a great community. And so our first certificate is to Shirley Holly. And Shirley, please come up. I'd like to congratulate you. And I want to acknowledge the cutest baby ever.
Sounds like you're running for office, Mayor.
Did that.
You didn't catch my baby, though.
So I just want to acknowledge this first class. Also, I have no authority to, I want to acknowledge this, let me go to the podium. So I just want to acknowledge this first class, and I don't have the authority to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. I want to bestow upon you additional responsibility in the community. When you hear others with questions, maybe help bring a little calm, a little pause and say, let me help you get some answers. When something seems a little off, let us know about it. And of course, please stay engaged. It's really great to have you in our community, your access to your community. You make our community. And it's a big deal. We've never done this before. I'm thrilled that we did it. We're going to do it again. But I appreciate the leadership that you've shown by participating and I want to thank you for that and thank you for the time you took out of your weeks to come work together and get to know each other. So thank you for that and congratulations. We're going to come together for one group photo. Any comments from council while I, yes, please, comments from council?
Yeah, I too would like to thank you and congratulate you for being engaged in our community, to see how our city works. And I want to also thank our staff for the effort they put into this. This didn't come out of nowhere. Staff through Magda and Danielle and all the way down and all of you at those meetings. I was laid up for a month. I apologize. I couldn't get to your dinners and lunches and all those things, but I was with you in spirit and staff did a great job, too. And I think it just really shows that the City of Half Moon Bay is concerned for all people. And we always have been, and so I thank you for that. But I wanted to make sure that our staff got some credit, too, so for all the work. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to ask Magda, our City Manager, if you could just make a comment about, this was Magda's idea, and I know a lot of staff time went into this, a lot of coordination time went into this. Magda, if you could just sort of give us an overview of your inspiration for this and maybe some plans going forward?
Thank you so much. As we talked a little bit about at the sessions, a lot of the work that we have to do, we have to do. We have to, we'd like to provide for a good organization, a good community, good public service, good police service, good libraries, good recreation, planning, all of those good things. But we want a great community, not just a good community. And in order to have a good community, we have to have community building and social capital. And so the idea behind this was to create that social capital and relationships between the community and the staff and the community and their neighbors. So while some of the work that we do is often quite bureaucratic, this is the fun stuff. So we were delighted to be able to participate. We're delighted to be able to bring this and we look forward to the next one. So yeah, this is wonderful. Thank you so much.
And as we move on to our agenda, I'll just share that, welcome you at our meetings. It's nice to see a full room. We don't always have a full room and on occasion, we have a very less than a full room. When you come to meetings in the future, you don't need to feel obligated to stay for the whole thing, although we feel more loved when you do. Oh, John, please.
You have to come now. It's a part of that certificate.
If I may, you know, not to dwell on it, but I've been doing a lot of reading the last four weeks, whether I wanted to or not. I came across an ag issue just last day or so, and it was regarding fences. And the headline is, it's about our heritage and it's called the line fence. And we all live with this. And it says here, quote, "Good fences make good neighbors, but a good attitude about a bad fence can work just as well." I thought that was pretty cool that these old farmers throughout America had to deal with in history. So let's make sure we have a good line fence and a good attitude. Thank you.
And for those of you who, this is your first meeting, I'll just let you know that we have an order that we follow for our agenda, so I'll just going to go through our agenda in the regular order. The next item on our agenda is Mayor's announcements of community activities and community service. I'm not aware of any, we just had Farm Day. Any upcoming activities we're aware of? I'm not.
Music in the Park Sunday.
Music in the Park. I know we have a speaker on that in a few minutes, but Music in the Park is on Sunday and we'll get more details in just a minute. That'll be at MacDutra Park, MacDutra Plaza. I guess we need to call it Music in the Plaza. Work on that. Then we have a report out from, I'm sorry, a report out from closed session. So to our city, next item on our agenda is, we had a closed session this evening where the council talks in private. City Attorney, you report out from closed session, please.
There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you, City Attorney. Council reports. This is the item on the agenda where we report out to the community of our activities other than regular City Council meetings. So to Councilmember Fraser.
Thank you. The Boys and Girls Club had their annual Easter egg hunt at Cunha and it was fantastic and it started at 11 o'clock and it was done by 11:04. Hundreds of kids, they'd only cleaned their rooms this quickly, scooped up every last egg. So another wonderful event put on by the Boys and Girls Club. And the Friends of the Library had the opportunity and distributed over 400 books for free to the children that attended that event, too. So it was good to get books in the hands of kids. Attended the Sustainable San Mateo County Award Ceremony and I was with MidPenn, who are the owners of the senior village. And the senior village was receiving a green building award for the project. They qualified because they had a point rating in this green scale of sustainability of over 181 and that puts them in the platinum category. And because there's so many great features in that new village, efficient water, fixtures, drought tolerant landscaping, thermal, solar, water, solar on the roof, just total energy conservation. So, and that was planned from the entire site, even where some of the apartments were situated to absorb the most sun. So the overall Moon Village project was an excellent example of sustainable design and it was called out for that. So congratulations again. This is like the second or third time MidPenn has won an award for that village. They had won an EPA award several years ago and that was just for the first favors of it. So lots of good things are coming from the village and we're very fortunate and so many people are very grateful to be living there now.
Thank you, Marina. Councilmember Muller?
Thank you. Had the privilege to present at Farm Day, which was the 47th Annual Farm Day Mel Mello in memory of a past council member, past mayor, and along with the Chamber of Commerce. It's just a spectacular day. I hope some of you have been there and I hope you can all go next year because it really and truly is an amazing day with all businesses and walks of life. And to get elected officials from our state and federal to attend a luncheon that lasts three hours is pretty amazing of their sharing their times. But I think the most important part is they give recognition to individuals that really are, step up above and beyond for their community. And I know looking out there that there'll be a number of you someday getting these awards. I might not be around, but at least you'll be recognized for your community service. The first one was the Glenn Ashcraft Chamber Community Service Award and it went to Gary Frank Fink, I believe if it is. And he really worked hard with all the youth in the community and Little League and starting and umpiring and every activity you could imagine for all these years. And that was a surprise name to me, too, because I didn't really know the individual, but he has just given so much and Naomi made an amazing presentation. And I had the privilege of presenting the Farmer of the Year and it went to Louis and Mike Yocapi. And this family's been on for generations on the coast and if you notice, a lot of parcels on the coast that are being farmed dry land without irrigation, without water, they're doing the job. This family has been farming dry before the drought was a common word and so well deserved for them. I mentioned that they did a great service for all of us with weed abatement because a lot of these empty fields and lots for fire protection, they're farming them. And they're starting right over here below the high school right now, cleaning it up and getting those weeds in the ground and be planting some peas and beans over there. They do a good job. And the Assembly Member Rich Gordon made a presentation about his elected time in office that just, we're all emotional, but just brought tears to your eyes. He was really amazing how his life has been fulfilled by all of us in his district and the community and the state Capitol and his recognition. And he did a wonderful job recognizing all of us. And the final one was the Like a Rock Award and you can only imagine, it was a surprise to all of us. I guess staff had to do a proclamation, but they kept a great secret from all of us until they mentioned the individual who had a couple animals at the fair and once she heard their names, she knew it was our own Marina Fraser. And it was a like a rock from, yeah, really and truly. And if you listen to her accomplishments over the last 25 years, your head just spins because we all give and try to share and do the best we can. But this lady has went well beyond her capabilities of the positive things she's done for this community. And it's not just coming from my mouth. I mean, Senator Jerry Hill interrupted the speakers just to go back to the history of what Marina has worked on and how many years she's worked on the library and our wonderful EOC next door that you all have been using. And just the amazing work that goes into this day with the volunteers and the food was fabulous, but the recognition to these three individuals is well deserved. And Marina, we can't thank you enough and we're so proud that you got the Dolores Mullins Award. And going back in history where Citrella is, that was our growers' association. And Dolores Mullins kind of ran that and she kind of ran us, too, to me, believe it or not, too, as young people. If you wanted to get into a school or get into a military service or the Elks or whatever, she got you in because she was connected politically. But she would give you hell, too. Excuse me, children in the room. She would give you whatever. And so they say if you've never been chewed out by Dolores, you'll never be a good leader. So we've all been chewed out by Dolores and God rest her soul, she can't do it anymore. But well deserved Like a Rock Award to Marina and we can't be more proud of you on this recognition. So thank you.
Thank you, John. It was quite an honor. And just for, especially ladies in the audience, Dolores Mullins was the first mayor of Half Moon Bay. I'm only the sixth and the city was incorporated in 1959, so more women.
Congratulations again, Marina, and much deserved. And if you haven't been chewed out by Dolores, I was never chewed out by Dolores, but I was chewed out by Marina a few times. And Naomi, so I feel like I'm qualified. So for myself, the main thing I participated in outside of City Council meetings and activity with city staff is the Sewer Authority MidCoast Side Meeting where we review the city, it's called SAM. And for those, again, for those of you that are new to this, this is an unglamorous, but not an unimportant, part of our community because we have to process all the things that you process at the Sewer Authority and do it in a smart and environmentally responsible way because we have protected habitat as well. We're working on the new budget for the Sewer Authority. It is very complicated. It is not small and we're having some challenges with that. So we're having an additional budget meeting next Monday. Definitely don't attend that, but if you want to, you certainly can. We welcome, it's open to the public. But we continue to work on the Sewer Authority budget with our other agency partners from the north and we will get that hammered out in the next couple of months. And with that, the next item on our agenda is the City Manager updates to City Council, to Magda.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We've got two items that I'd like to share with you today and we'll do a bit of a slide presentation on these. One is the update on the sidewalk survey and then the second is an update on the general plan process. So I'll ask our Community Development Director, there he is, John Dowdy.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, community. We're happy to be here to report on something that we've been busy at and have recently completed and that is the update on sidewalks. So just as a brief overview and then I'm going to hand this over to Brian Lee, who will carry it forward from there. In the 2015-16 Capital Improvements Program, the council authorized funding and allocated funding to do a survey of sidewalks. We followed that up with a contract with Precision Concrete to conduct a survey of all the sidewalks in the city. The survey was completed recently and Brian will present to you the results of that and some of those issues. Before I turn it over, though, I would like to just acknowledge Brian. Brian worked for a private firm. He took over as our interim city engineer reluctantly, but he did that. And he's done an excellent job. He's been an excellent mentor and colleague during this time and I just want to thank him for his service to the community while I have a chance in the mic. Brian?
Thank you for those words, John, Mayor, councilmembers, public. Like John was mentioning, we hired Precision Concrete. They're a firm that's over, I believe, in San Carlos and they do surveys and actually do the construction work, actually fixing sidewalks that are what we call, there's displacement or there's offsets. So that. Why did we conduct a survey? I believe last year, ABAG and along with the City Attorney's Office gave a presentation on surveys on sidewalk issues and maintenance and tree maintenance. And at that time, I think council asked for the question about what's the conditions of the city surveys for sidewalks. So with that, we ended up hiring Precision Concrete to do a survey of the entire city sidewalk system. They spent about six weeks out here. You might have seen them out there. People... People with the GPS, took like little antennas, and they're out there with surveying. They actually have actual corners where each displaced sidewalks were recording that. So, we have a document for every sidewalks that was offset. As it says there, they, basically, we have an obligation because of the ADA requirement, responsibility of meeting ADA requirements for sidewalks. Anytime you had sidewalks of more than a quarter inch or more displacement, it's a potential tripping hazard. And of course, a potential liability for the homeowners or property owners that, and the city itself. So, to do that, again, it's best interest for the city to work with the public and the residences and businesses to make sure the sidewalks were smooth. So, as after their survey, what they end up coming up with is approximately, they found 2,731 locations where we have offset sidewalks or offsets more than a quarter inch or more that's potentially causing tripping hazards. Also, there are approximately about 200 locations where the sidewalks were more than two inches in displacement, or cracked so much that you can't replace it by this method. A method that we would probably recommend is something called concrete slicing, where they're not grinding the sidewalk, but they're actually slicing it. It almost looks like exposed aggregate, but it makes it a smoother surface. And I'll explain to that more when we go through this. Again, picture on the left there shows a person with his little survey and his GPS monitor, taking pictures and recording every location where there's an offset. Again, they came up with, it came up with 2,731 offset sidewalk panels. Each of those panels are roughly about five by five. So, there's a way of documenting this, recording it, and then we have an idea of how much it costs to fix this. They gave us a proposed estimate anywhere from $65,000 to $80,000 to use this concrete slicing method to fix these offsets. There's another approximately, if we didn't do it this way, if we had to actually replace the sidewalks, you're probably looking at anywhere from $750,000 to $850,000 to replace concrete sidewalks. That's quite a bit. Again, this is an example of the data that's collected. This is like one street that we did. You can see all the different points that's shown on this GIS survey, this aerial survey that they took. Here's an example of a typical sidewalk uplifts. On the left, or actually on the right, you'll see that displacement there. You know, it's just offset. A lot of times it's caused by tree roots, sometimes differential sediment because of the soil. Here's an example of sidewalks that can't be fixed by this slicing method. These would have to be complete removal and replacement of new concrete sidewalks. Here's an example showing before and after of what they can do. On the left there, you see that displacement. That one's probably about, oh, three quarters of an inch on the left side, it may be up to about an inch and a half on the right. Actually, they do this concrete slicing method. They've actually leveled out the sidewalks. They can do this. Usually, most sidewalks about four inches thick, so as long as it's not more than two inches of displacement, they could usually do this concrete slicing method. This is an example of what they can do while we recommend this concrete slicing versus grinding. As you can see, if they grind the sidewalks, it leaves this unpleasant-looking, aesthetic-looking, rough surface. Sometimes you get chipping, too, that's not the best for the concrete sidewalks. It's very, very different surface, as you can see, between a slicing method and this concrete grinding. One of the things that this concrete slicing method does is it is sustainable. It's environmentally friendly. They don't use as much water, in fact, they don't use any water. It's a dry method where they use a HEPA filter, and they actually, it's like slicing bread with a real sharp saw. And it is used a HEPA filter or vacuum to suck up any dust and debris. Anyway, that is approximately for what we have, there's about 5,700 gallons of gasoline that would be saved, and about 51 metric tons of carbon dioxide if you didn't have to replace sidewalks, if you use this concrete slicing method. So, right now, right now, we've asked for a major budget adjustment to identify these 27 locations, approximately anywhere, again, between $65,000, $80,000 we could put in a budget. What we're looking at is possibly looking at going either with a formal bid request with contractors, or because this one contractor is a sole source, they have a patent for this type of technology, we'd ask the city attorneys to look into this with us to see if that's a possibility. Again, this would actually reduce any liability, any chip fall situations for both adjacent property owners and the city. And then, in terms of replacing sidewalks, we'd come back to council in nine months or so with a better understanding of which concrete sidewalks need to get replaced. There are some situations where we have existing utility boxes that are crazing, they broke it up sidewalks, and we'd plan to go back to the utility companies to assist us in replacing those sidewalks. And at the same time, we'd be actually coming back to council also addressing any street tree maintenance responsibilities. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I like the applause. We don't often get applause. It's a good group. And any questions from council, or go to the next?
I think it's an incredible tool and very resourceful.
Okay, thank you. So, we accept this report, and the next item is the update on the general plan.
Thank you, council members, mayor, community. Jill will give you a brief presentation on where we are with the general plan, and I'll follow with the same issue. I have the mic and the opportunity to thank Jill, and I think a round of applause is definitely in order for her for doing what she's doing, working through the general plan, working through very difficult challenges of timeframes that were not necessarily the most logically sort of laid out from us by outside agencies for grant funds, and just kind of beating through and working through this process. So, it's an exciting time. We're going to be moving forward with G-PAC meetings in the next couple of weeks. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jill.
Good evening, Mayor Quelcheck and City Council and members of the community. On behalf of the City Manager and our Community Development Director, Steph is here tonight to provide an update on Plan Half Moon Bay, which is the city's local coastal program and general plan update. I'm Jill Ikis. I'm the city's project manager for what we call Plan HMB. Our last community engagement was in December, so that's when we concluded a policy synthesis process. That was quite a while ago, and now is a key time for us to share with you and the community what we have been doing and what's coming up. We will cover these topics in brief tonight, and, yay, okay, hold on here. We'll cover these topics and are happy, I like to take questions along the way or at the end if you have any. But one thing that we're going to focus on for a few minutes tonight is just about the structure of this document. Plan Half Moon Bay has many pieces. They support each other. Some will come ahead of others. Iteration will occur, and because of this occasionally non-sequential process, we will spend a few, we need to spend a few minutes talking about these relationships and the status of the different pieces, because we have quite a few coming out in, over the next month or so, and they're at different phases in the process, and I think it's of note. So, first off, this is the general graphic timeline that you've seen several times before. The orange boxes indicate what has basically been completed. We're in the green box area where we're coming forward with draft plans, and soon after that, we would conduct environmental review, and then with more to come later. As sort of helpful as that is, it really does not flush out the relationships of the parts of Plan Half Moon Bay. So, we hope this helps. I'm going to take a couple minutes on this. There are four pieces that we're looking at in this structure: foundation, policy, analysis, and implementation. Generally, they follow the order by the numbers one through four as they're presented on that graphic, but not always. So, let's take a look at that. Let's start with foundation. Obviously, community input was a foundational piece. We also have to always look at what are the requirements for a local coastal program or a general plan. We need to have that as a foundation. What are, what's in the existing plans? What are the existing conditions of the community? We have reports about that. We also have a sea level rise vulnerability assessment. All those other things have been done, but this last one is just coming forward. So, that's another foundational component. The next block here is our planning policy, or the plans themselves. The two key plans that we're updating, the local coastal land use plan and the general plan, those are at the, at the policy level. The local coastal land use plan is the policy side of what we call the LCP, the Local Coastal Program. So, those two together are the, really, the policy gist of this whole planning endeavor, but not the whole thing. The other piece that really feeds directly into that and occurs sort of concurrently and iteratively is analysis. As soon as these draft documents are made public, we know we're going to get all kinds of helpful, insightful input from our community, from our General Plan Advisory Committee, from our Planning Commission. We're also going to conduct technical studies to assess the performance of these plans, and that's really the overarching think on that is the Environmental Impact Report, but you know that it includes all kinds of individual studies, such as a traffic study or a greenhouse gas emissions analysis. So, those three are very much underway concurrently. And then we have implementation, which is typically subsequent, and yet, in this case, you'll see that it also overlaps. But the key piece of implementation in this program is the Local Coastal Implementation Plan. That's the other half of your local coastal program, and for Half Moon Bay, that's really the zoning ordinance. Other plans, like area plans, such as for downtown, or a climate action plan for Half Moon Bay, also come in that category. Now, I'm going to ask you to excuse the animation, but we want to highlight the specific components that are coming forward that we're really excited to tell you about. Now, one of these is a retread, the Existing Conditions Report that was completed in July 2014. We had quite a bit of input from the Planning Commission back in September, and other comments that had been received previously, and we went back through all of those comments, and we've catalogued them and prepared some revisions. And it really is not a waste of time at all, because anything that we found that needed to be revised was directly moved into the plan. So, that is something that is coming out very, very soon, as is the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment. And then, at the end of April, the draft, the first public review draft of the Local Coastal Land Use Plan is going to be coming out as well. The general plan elements that are outside the realm of the Coastal Act policies aren't ready yet, those are going to follow, and we'll keep you posted on how they're coming forward. Although, remember, your housing element is completed and certified, so that's, that's one that's a wonderful box to have been checked. We had considered, I just want to make a note on a couple things. We had talked to you about a charrette, and council was very much interested in a charrette, and we had hoped that we could have staged it at this point in time. And I've got to tell you, we've been immersed in getting this done, and also working with the Planning Commission Ad-Hoc Committee. It seems to us that we need some more, a little more time, and staff continues to believe that there is potential for a very special and effective experience. And we know from the Planning Commission Ad-Hoc Committee that they want to touch back with the commission as a whole, and so we're meeting with them to discuss that. And we'll get back to you after we have an update with them. We've done quite a bit of background work on it. I'm not intending to present that tonight. We need to work, work through that a little bit more with our committee and have a more polished package for you. But I want you to know, it's not been set aside, it's just, it's not where we had hoped it would be. For the Climate Action Plan, that's another one that we know our community and our council members are interested in. Some of our outreach over Plan Half Moon Bay was very interested in the community input regarding climate action plan and behavior changes and things like that that relate to reductions in energy use and emissions. And we are posing that it would be very helpful, and there's synergy, to have that developed following the preparation of the Environmental Impact Report for the policy documents. That report will give us a sense of how well the plan performs at the policy level. There are many policies in these draft plans that we've been reviewing that are climate and sustainability oriented, and would lead the way and bring forward a climate action plan, following that with, with a lot of the technical work completed. Now, this also will keep happening. Analysis keeps going on, and for the implementation items as well. Now, that said, here's our graphic simplified with a big word, iteration, to remind us that things may happen in the implementation mode, for example, that we didn't anticipate. Some, some great idea came forth, and if the policy in our, in our plans is inconsistent with that, we go back and we can iterate. I don't, I can't anticipate how much that would happen at this point. The policies are, you know, they're broader than what, what happens in those more detailed plans. But this is how we see it, and it does eventually come together. It isn't always going to be a swirling loop. It will come together. It will be a homogeneous planning document, policy document, a platform for Half Moon Bay. So, that's where we are. I've seen this happen before, and I just, I want to reassure you that we, we're pulling it together here. So, the very specific next steps, we have two meetings on the book with our General Plan Advisory Committee. We can't wait to see them again. They'll be meeting two weeks apart, April 14th, to look at the, they'll, they'll be presented with the Revised Existing Conditions Report. We're not really intending to review it so much as to highlight what we've changed. And then, to give them an overview of what's in the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment, and they will have that as a resource. Of course, these documents will be posted online. Everyone will be able to take a look at them, and we will post them as soon as we can, if we're able to, before the meetings, but at a minimum, as soon as the meeting happens, they'll be available to the public. On the 28th, we will be conveying the Local Coastal Land Use Plan, and we also, at that point in giving an overview, will discuss with the G-PAC a work plan for working through that document. Obviously, that's, that's kicking off. We know there's going to be quite a few more meetings. We, we need to gauge with them what the pacing should look like, and really what works, and frankly, we have, we have grant milestones and other things. So, we'll, we'll collaborate and come up with that. General plan elements later. And then, we also would like to give the Planning Commission an update on April 12th next week, similar to this. Every time that we can get some televised coverage to encourage people to come to the meetings, we like to do so. And I want to emphasize, the General Plan Advisory Committee meetings are public forums. They are Brown Act meetings, and the G-PAC takes public comments, so it's a great time to come and learn more about Half Moon Bay's planning. And that's all I have for the update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, thank you for your report. Well done. Any questions or comments from council?
Just briefly, for the benefit of all, in your experience, thank you for all the hard work going into this and the many hours of all the community members. And it's not something we wake up in the morning and say, we're going to do this general plan. This is something that is mandated by the state. But how long do you think a general plan will hold together after it is completed? In a, in just kind of a sheepherder's guess of how many are out there?
That's a great question. A couple ways of looking at it. General plans are prepared with a planning horizon. This plan has a 2035 planning horizon, so a, basically a 20-year plan. Most of them are intended to be effective for 20 years. Now, in some cases, they have a longer runway than that, and they, they can last longer if change isn't happening, or, you know, other components of what's working for the community. In other cases, unforeseen things may come forward, and you may need to make some adjustments. That doesn't mean you're adjusting the whole thing. For example, the housing element gets updated on seven-year cycles now, whether the rest of the plan does or not. But the PAT answers 20 years, and the other thing is that in And the other thing is that, in my opinion, planners should be trying their best to think forward 50 and 100 years, if they possibly can. It's not, obviously, we can't see the future that clearly, but there's some things we know about, like sea level rise, and we should really push that envelope.
Thank you. It's unfortunate the baby left, because hopefully he'll be able to be part of this in the future.
Thank you. Mina?
Jill, thank you for such a thorough report and laying out the process really well. I know you've worked very hard on this, and it's important, and I think this helps people visualize how this all comes together. So, it's great, and G-PAC will be coming back together. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to the next update. Next item on our agenda is the public forum. If anybody wishes to speak to the city council at a meeting, you can fill out a little blue card, which is located over there. Give it, put it in the basket over here, and you can speak at the podium for three minutes. The first person speaking this evening is Shirazad Pantera, and followed by John Ullm.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. I'm here. My name is Shirazad Pantera. I'm on Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation Committee, and I'm here to talk to you and invite you and all of our community members to Concert in the Park. So, we're really excited to have our third one this year, and this Sunday, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. We're going to have two great bands. We're going to have Cafe Jazz Quintet and Joya Nova. They're both really great jazz blues, so put on your dancing shoes. And we'll definitely have time, there'll be a break in the middle, so we'll have time to tell the community about our Parks and Recreation Programs, about Friends of, give them opportunity to become friends of our parks and trails, working together to bring community awareness to our parks' needs, our trail needs, and have fun. And they'll definitely have time to visit the downtown stores, and we really encourage that you bring a picnic basket and enjoy the afternoon with us. And I really do want to, I wanted to be here to thank city council in person. You guys really had the vision a few years ago to allocate some funds for this. One, to have a party for the community, for us to have a great time, and two, to bring awareness to our parks. And this year, we have focused on McDoody Plaza. Thank you for spending money in there and redoing it. We've been having a great time. It's a stage, but we are hoping with Concert in the Park that we'll bring awareness to all of our parks. And also, I'd like to do a special shout-out to our staff. Alex, he's been really great, working with the committee and all of our different needs, and we are a Brown Act committee, so he has to get in the middle, as you know, with staff and coordinate a lot, and we really appreciate it. And also, like I said, just Friends of Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation, and like us on Facebook, and hmbparks.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shirazad. And Shirazad, what time is this event?
1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday?
On Sunday.
Fantastic. Great. I will be there. And I know the weather's supposed to be great, so I'm looking forward to that. John Ullm is our next speaker, followed by, I'm sorry, Martin Anong? If I may have that wrong.
John Ullm, thanks for having me up here. This one's kind of like all over the place, so I'll do my best to keep it coherent. There seems to be a problem with staff deciding which information to supply to your citizens and whatnot, and bypassing you. Example, this is the recent decision to obtain advice concerning the Taxpayers Protection Act. It kind of came out of the blue. The first time we heard about it, the response was by Councilman Wheeler that he felt that somebody was trying to paralyze the city. The next time it came up, something extraordinary happened. Staff wanted to release attorney-client privileged advice. And I can tell you, you don't get attorney-client privileged advice if you ask for it. They won't ever approve it, nor will they even ask you guys to approve it, which is actually your privilege, not theirs, which is why they asked you to, for approval, to share the advice that staff decided on its own to seek out. And so, the timeline went basically, citizens decided they wanted to have a Taxpayer Protection Act. So, they wrote up a ballot measure, submitted the text to the attorney, I think it was a different attorney than Mr. Candati was in, who did an analysis of that text, and then that approved it, or whatever it is that they do. And then, we went out and collected 947 signatures. I guess they didn't think we were going to get it, but they did. So, the city was then given a choice, either make it the law of the land, or let it go on a ballot measure. And you chose to let it go on a ballot measure. Then apparently, while discussing the finances of the library, Mr. Galogly found out that the person who wanted, the people who were going to provide that financing or were consulting on it, became concerned about the Taxpayer Protection Act. So, because of the financing threat to the library, Mr. Galogly and that lawyer decided that the Taxpayer Protection Act needed to be reexamined, even though your lawyers had examined it and approved it, and put it in front of you, and you all voted on it. So, they decided to do that. And then, as it came about, a PowerPoint presentation was made up, and amazingly, you were all ready for it. And when staff asked to share it, five of you guys decided to share it. So, I was thinking, well, if they're willing to share the advice, I'd like to see what cost, how it came about, who instigated it. Well, staff decided they didn't want to provide that. Matter of fact, I think it was Jessica Blair. I'm sorry, I don't know who did it, but your name is on it, asserted attorney-client privilege, which is not hers to assert. My three minutes are up. Thanks.
Thank you, John. The next person is Martin. Martin, thank you. And Martin, sorry if I butchered your last name, apologize, followed by Alicia Ruiz.
And city council, Mayor Kowalczek, and staff, Marty Anaya. Pacific Coast TV, don't worry about it, happens all day, every day. But about a year and a half ago, the Board of PCT and I engaged on a process by which we would really look at and examine how we can expand services to the city of Half Moon Bay and to the coast side. You might recall about nine months ago, I came before you and said, "We're going to create a satellite studio," and in that satellite studio, we're going to be able to do many more things than we've been able to do up until now. This wasn't something that was asked for or required by the city, but it was something that PCT thought was the right thing to do and that we needed to do. So, what I'm very happy to report to you here tonight is that we've been working on that, we've been working on that for some time. This last week, we just were very fortunate to get a renewal, contract renewal, with the county of San Mateo for another five years, which means that we are going to be the coast side provider for all of the unincorporated areas and around Half Moon Bay. And as such, we need to have a center that's not located in Pacifica, but a center that's located here that services the folks here. So, I'm happy and very proud to report to you that with all but a couple of little minor adjustments, that that has been completed, and that we are very happy to say that now not only are we able to provide expanded services in terms of the way that we cover meetings and so forth, but also in terms of the way that we serve the public, and the fact that those services are available to the public at a much closer distance and at a much, much greater capacity. So, this Saturday, we invite you, and I know that there's some big things going on this Saturday, that a lot of council folks from all over San Mateo County are going to be at. But for anybody who's watching at home, for those folks here, and certainly for all the city staff and yourselves, if you are able to attend, please do. It's right here at the Ted Adcock Center, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's our open house, and we're going to be showing you, the community, how you can utilize these wonderful new tools and really expand your voice as a community, and have that really be something that's even a greater benefit and more meaningful than it has been. And I have to say, it's been pretty good. So, this is something that'll be streaming, it'll be online, and it'll be available on our YouTube channel, as well as live on television. Very excited. Again, it's 12:00 to 2:00, right here at the Ted Adcock Center this Saturday, and we hope everyone can attend. Do appreciate your time.
Thank you. Martin, quick question for you. So, at 12:00 to 2:00, is it a presentation? Is it hands-on? What you just described?
Actually, we wanted to make it look like a presentation and kind of fool folks, but you've actually tipped my hand. So, yes, there's actually going to be some live fun stuff to do for folks. We really want people to actually literally get in and roll up their shirt sleeves and see that it isn't that daunting. Most people, when they think about community media, the first thing that they think is, "Oh, my goodness, I could never do this. This is way beyond my capabilities." The reality is, is that the technology is the least of it. It's the people power, and that's what we're trying to muster and gain, is the support of folks that really want to go out there and do something. So, technology, little bit, it'll be fun, though.
Great. Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Alicia Ruiz.
I'd actually like to start by saying that I don't live here in Half Moon Bay. I live in San Jose, but I work for the American Cancer Society, and I have the wonderful opportunity to work with volunteers in your area to put on an event called Relay for Life, which I'm sure some of you in the community have heard of. So, really what I wanted to do today was just to come in to let you know that it's happening this year. It's a bit of a ways away. It's July 30th and 31st. For those in the audience who don't know what Relay for Life is, it's a 24-hour cancer walk. We honor cancer survivors and their caregivers. It is ACS's signature fundraiser. ACS provides free services to cancer patients and their families, as well as research. We provide rides to cancer patients who couldn't normally get to their treatment, housing if you need to travel hundreds of miles away from your home in order to receive your treatment, classes, workshops, anything you really name, we can provide that for you, again, free of service. So, Relay for Life helps fund those programs, but it's also a really big celebration for cancer survivors. It's a great community event that we like to get everybody to come out to. Again, it's 24 hours, you don't have to stay the full 24, but we love to get community members out there to enjoy and celebrate with us, because we are creating a world with more birthdays. Thank you.
Thank you. And you, so what is the date for the event, again?
It is July 30th and 31st at Half Moon Bay High School, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m. to 10:00. Thank you for your support for our community and your involvement, and I participated last year, and I will certainly be there this year.
Fantastic. I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar, items 1, 1A, B, C, D, and E.
Mayor, I'm sorry? Before we continue, Mayor, may I have just a moment?
Yes, please.
I'd just like to briefly respond to some statements that were made during public comment period. I don't often interdict myself into public comment, into responding to things that are said by the public, but given the circumstances, I do feel the need to respond in this instance. Mr. Ullm, I'm talking directly to you. Feel free to call me anytime. Feel free to ask me any questions you have. Our correspondence, I've been as responsive as I can, but when you've come up tonight and you've said things that are misrepresentations, that are inaccurate, or that are utterly and false statements, or simply untrue, I have to respond. And so, I invite you, as I have, and I will continue to do so, to contact me and have a phone conversation, or meet me face-to-face to discuss things. And unfortunately, Mr. Ullm, this isn't a dialogue. You can have your public comment, I'm entitled to mine, so we can have our conversation and dialogue afterwards. But when you come to a public meeting and make those kind of accusations, I am going to stand up and say that you're wrong, and I look forward to talking to you to correct your misunderstandings.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, city attorney, I appreciate your comments and the clarification, and I'll move to the Consent Calendar, items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, and 1E. Is there any items to pull, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion on those items that have been listed by the mayor.
A motion, is there a second?
I second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor acknowledged by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Moving on to item 3A, Budget for Preliminary Design of Sewer Authority Mid-Cost Side Recycled
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Kudjikin, Deputy City Manager for this great city. The item before you this evening is the approval of the Budget for Preliminary Design of a Sewer Authority Mid-Cost Side Recycled Water Facility. So, I just got a, we have our sewer engineer consultant who is with us this evening, and I believe she is right outside, so if we can just pause for about 20 seconds and let me track her down.
Okay, so we'll take just a three-minute break. We'll be finding our, okay, we're not going to take a three-minute break, we're just going to continue. Thank you.
Don't approach the dais, please, Speaker. Don't approach the dais. No, don't receive it.
I didn't receive it.
No.
Thank you.
Give it to staff.
So, with that note, how rudely inappropriate.
Keep it up.
Just rudely inappropriate. Yeah, you're rude and you're inappropriate. So, we're going to restart the?
Stand down.
All right.
Ask him to be removed, the legal counsel. See if he could be removed for interrupting the meeting.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Alex Kudjikin, Deputy City Manager with the city of Half Moon Bay. I now have Vivian Hausen, our city sewer engineer, here with us this evening, who's going to help us present this item to the council. The item before you is the approval of the Budget for the Preliminary Design of the Sewer Authority Mid-Cost Side Recycled Water Facility. So, I'll go ahead and I'll have Vivian take it from here.
Thank you. So, we have a brief presentation on the Sewer Authority Mid-Cost Side Recycled Water Project. And should I control it with this? Okay, so Sam, Sewer Authority Mid-Cost Side has requested that its member agencies approve a budget for 25% design of a recycled water project. Sam's been discussing the recycled water potential for many years. They have looked at various customers, and they are currently focused on one customer, the Ocean Colony Partners and their golf course. This request concludes four different study that it?
Vivian, excuse me. Gentlemen, if you would like to continue your conversation outside, I'd appreciate that. It's a little distracting. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you, Vivian. Please continue.
So, there have been four studies. The studies were completed in 2008, 2009. So there have been four studies. The studies were completed in 2008, 2009, 2010, and most recently, 2015. And in a couple slides, I'll have more information on those studies. The studies evaluated the technologies, the feasibility, the cost of recycled water. What they're asking is for 25% design to further design treatment facilities that they believe would be required to serve recycled water. The cost for that design is $185,562. The city's portion, which is 51%, would be $92,597. There were several requests for proposals that were involved behind the selection of a consultant for this work. They're planning to use an outside consultant for this work. The other member agencies, Granada Community Services District and Montero Water and Sanitary District, have approved the budget. We have, the city staff has concerns about the cost, and I'll discuss that in a minute, and also some details about the process. And so our recommendation is to recommend budget approval, however, to also specify components that need to be addressed as part of the preliminary design. Can you go to the next? Oh, I am. Okay, so, there we are. So what staff recommends is that, in addition to the 25% design, SAM prepare a business plan. And the reason why we believe this business plan is needed is because the recycled water plant has a significant cost associated with it, not only the cost of the capital improvements, not only the cost of the treatment plant and the pumping and distribution facilities, but also operations and maintenance of both of those, and the inside the fence and outside the fence, as it's called. There are also some conditions that are currently discussed in the planning documents. One is that SAM would give up one of its clarifiers during the summer, and that would, the clarifier would be cleaned, disinfected, and certified for recycled water storage. I didn't see a lot of discussion as to whether that can be done. That's a very difficult thing to do, to take wastewater storage facility that's made of concrete and certify it for recycled water distribution. There's also, in the planning documents, that SAM currently has a spare aeration basin, and that it would use that for recycled water storage also. The conditions and the cost for the use of those facilities, and what would happen if SAM needed those facilities, has not been addressed in the planning documents, and that should be part of the business plan. Also, the technology that's been selected by SAM, it's called membrane filtration. It doesn't remove the salts sufficiently. The Ocean Colony Partners have expressed concern about that. They have done their own separate study on water quality. They feel that they still need to purchase potable water to flush the system, and to flush the greens of these salts that are coming from the recycled water. That cost hasn't been included in the analysis. And then finally, if SAM is not able to produce the water, yet they've promised the water, who carries that cost and that risk? The cost of that risk is not addressed. And so we understand that Ocean Colony Partners has approximately $500,000 annually to pay for this project. They are the sole customer, and so they would be the sole provider of the funding for this project. So I think it's very, very important before more budget is expended beyond the 25% design that these questions are answered, mostly so Coastside County Water District and Ocean Colony Partners really understand the big picture and know what they are committing to. And part of what we're asking for is a written commitment from them, an endorsement that says, tells us that they have read this business plan, they understand the costs and the risks, and they continue to endorse the project. The next slide shows why we're concerned about the cost of recycled water. There have been four studies, as I mentioned, and the cost of recycled water has changed for each study. The costs that, for the 2008 study, were about $6.8 million. At that point, there was a technology called reverse osmosis that was designed to remove the salts, but it's a much, it's a more expensive technology than the membrane filtration. In 2009, the facility was determined to be a membrane filtration facility, and in that regard, would produce water with salts, and there would be a need for potable water to flush the salts. The cost at that time was 8.5 million, and then the cost for the same facility in a 2010 study was 6.2 million, and then the cost for the same facility in a 2015 study was about 5 million. The 2015 study no longer looked at the distribution facilities because Coastside County looked at their own distribution facilities, and they assessed the cost of their facilities to be about $1.2 million. So with all those changes, we're concerned. You know, over time, we know costs have gone up, and so we're concerned that the costs in the reports have gone down, and are they real costs? Have they looked at the big picture? They haven't looked at items such as storage. And are we really telling Coastside County the whole story about the cost of recycled water? And so this slide, oops, let's back up. So I think we've gone through all these items. These are the items that we had discussed we would like to see in the aeration basin. Yeah, it looks like we talked about all of them already. And so, so once this business plan is developed, then, and we would like the member agencies to read this business plan and understand the risk that's introduced by the final project. And the risk to the member agencies is the risk of having the aeration basin taken, the secondary clarifier taken, and the risk of the cost of the facility should SAM not be able to produce the water, not be able to deliver it. And then also for Coastside County to provide written endorsement, understanding the costs, not only of the SAM facility, not only of their facility, but operations and maintenance, and all the other costs that are required as a component of this project. So staff recommendation is to approve the budget. We support recycled water. Recycled water is a good thing, and if there is a viable project, it makes sense to move forward and continue to consider that project. So the staff recommendation is to approve the budget for 25% design for a city cost of $92,597. And to include as a condition of the approval, that SAM must prepare a business plan that includes the items that were described below, and that Coastside County Water District endorse the business plan in writing and confirm that they continue to be a partner in the recycled water project.
Thank you for your report. I have comments and things to say, but any comments from other councilmembers before I do? John?
I'm quite familiar with a number of treatment plants throughout the Nine Bay Area counties, and it is a vastly complex situation to treat our wastewater, number one, and it's a very expensive process. And I think there's a number of reasons why you want to do it, but you better ensure that you have the proper plan, and again, looking at one potential customer is a bit frightening from my perspective. And also, I think we're looking at the footprint of that treatment plant. I'm very concerned that the size of it is just not capable of much expansion. And so I'd really want to see and feel and understand where this water would be moved to, treated, stored, and delivered. I think it's asking for an awful lot at this time, and I'm not real comfortable with it at the moment, personally.
Any comments?
I'm good with discussing this now, but I really think this needs full counsel here, and particularly the Vice Mayor, since she's Chair of SAM and on the Recycled Water Committee, because I'm not comfortable with making a decision without hearing more. I have concerns. We want recycled water. Everyone does. But at what point will you not pay for it? And having, you know, seen different iterations of this through the past 10 years, and at one point, we had a small plant to try some water, and it did produce Title 22 Water, which is the certified recycled water, but it burned the grass at Ocean Colony when they tested it. So we do have naturally high salt content. I'm very concerned about pouring more money into this, because at what point will the golf course not pay for it? I mean, they are the perfect customer. It would be good to put recycled water in their greens. Many other people in the state do it. But at what cost? Is this just not feasible? Is it, and this will probably sound glib, but are we better off saving more water and giving everybody a rain barrel to connect to their roof to save water, to free up more water? Is there something that can be done just it throughout Ocean Colony to feed water to the two golf courses, to use the excess water that's around there? So I'd like to hear a little more, but I'm not comfortable making a decision without full counsel here on this. And to have an agreement with Ocean Colony, what is their threshold for paying for this? And definitely not moving forward until all parties understand truly what this will cost, because this could cost ultimately $10 million, and it's not fair for the rest of the community to pay for it for one customer. So...
Thank you. So I have some comments as well. So first, first a question. The use of the basin, aeration basin, is that the, the clarifier? Maybe I misunderstood. Is it not a regulatory requirement that one be made redundant and available? Does it have to be, I guess, does it have to be available so that if it were needed, you'd shut off recycled water? You make that avail, how does that work?
There is a need for the largest process. If the largest process is out of service, then the plant can produce, can treat the flow, the incoming flow. So what the SRT report is saying is that during the summer, the treatment plant doesn't need both clarifiers. So one clarifier can be used for recycle storage. The clarifier is the largest process that would be taken out of service. However, if there's an upset, the clarifier would have to come right back, because that's what redundant capacity is. So that's the concern about using...
So that means then you would drain it of the recycled water, you'd flood it somewhere, and then recycled water would be off, and, okay, got it.
Right.
So there's an added complexity there. The, how did this project start? Now, I know it started a while ago, but how did this iteration of the project start? Do you guys know? So Councilmember Alafano, then Councilmember Alafano, myself, brought this up to the SAM board, because we were enthusiastic supporters to try to find a way to bring recycled water to the community and to make it available to Ocean Colony Partners for the golf course. I still believe that is the right thing to do, and that we should try to do that, and we should make every effort to do that. That being said, I also think we need to be smart about it and not just chase it blindly. That's not good business for us, and not good for them, so we could get down the road and find out that that's not viable. My personal preference would be to, would be to do the business plan and see where we stack up first, and then go forward with the project for the 25% design. I want to share that, what's at risk here? It's not that we're spending money, it's that we would be, the risk for Half Moon Bay is $92,000 should the project never, never go forward. That's just money out the door. We really get nothing back for that. It's, that's basically what we're putting at risk. And as you know, you, maybe you don't know, but the public should know, that it's very, very rare for the city to put money at risk like that. That is, it's like venture capital for a project, and we just don't operate that way. We, we would typically want to understand that there is a viable project, that it's validated, it's, and that we have a customer for it, and have agreements in place, and then we spend money, so that money isn't wasted. That's the typical process. This is, proposal is a little different in that we would be putting out $90,000 of our funds, plus $90,000 from two other agencies, for $180-some thousand to develop a 25% design, which is the level of design that is needed to start going after grants and things for, for the project. It feels a little carpe for the horse. I agree. My preference would be to do business plan first. I think that's smart. But I would tend to be supportive of doing, of moving forward with the project, because I think the community would understand this risk if we had the elements of the business plan included as a requirement, a contingent upon approval for the business plan to be included. But that being said, I also think it's really important that we have the other members of the City Council chime in on this, especially the Vice Mayor. She's, so we sit on SAM together. We work very well on SAM together. I was on the Recycled Water Committee of SAM for a while, and now I stepped down from that, and now Vice Mayor Ruddock is now on the Recycled Water Committee, and I think it's important that she is a perspective on this. I think we're, we initiated this project. We brought, we kind of brought it back. We, the SAM board and member agencies signed a letter, not a letter, a, what do we call it? Not a letter of intent, a...
Guiding principles.
We put together guiding principles for the project. Thank you, Alex. Guiding principles for the project. We all agree to, we all want to do this. We just need to do this in a smart way. We can't just go chasing it with our money, because that's a good way to lose. So those are my thoughts. I wanted to share those. But with that, I would like to get consensus from council. I want to continue this item to our next meeting, whenever, all the councilmembers can be present.
Sounds good with me.
Okay, so we will continue this item to the next City Council meeting. Is that, oh, I need a motion. A motion for that?
I'd so move this, I'd so move this agenda item, the move to a future meeting.
A motion to continue the item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. And thank you, Alex and Vivian, for your analysis and report. Alex, I would like this presentation electronically, please. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, Agenda Item 3B, Fiscal Year 2015-16 Midyear Review and Adoption of Resolution to Adjust Fiscal Year 15-16 Budget. Julia, welcome.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council, the item before you tonight is Fiscal Year 2015-16 Midyear Budget Review. The midyear budget review is the industry standard. The purpose of the midyear is to conduct analysis of year-to-date revenues and expenditures. It allows opportunities to review assumptions that were made before the budget cycle, and to make necessary adjustments to reflect changes in serious economic, political, and business conditions. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the attached resolution, authorizing the adjustments to the serious fiscal year 15-16 operating and capital budget. The budget report before you includes the following changes. Increase in revenues projections by a little bit over 1.6, well, closer to 1.7 million, and about 1.1 million of this will be in general fund. We'll talk about it a little bit later. And increase in appropriation by a little bit over 1.6 million, with 208,000 approximately being in general fund. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to update council on status of fiscal year 15-16 revised budget revenues and expenditures, including year-to-date adjustments to general and non-general funds. We will review projected fund balance structure and talk a little bit about preparations for the fiscal year 16-17 budget. This slide provides a very big-picture view of the serious fiscal year 15-16 performance across all funds. You can see that revenues across all funds are going up by close to 1.7 million, and expenditures are going up by 1.6 million. And if you look at blue and green bars on the slide, you can see, you can see the comparison, how, what it looks like between adopted and revised budget. Fiscal year 15-16 budget was adopted as a balanced budget, and based on this chart, you can see it remains balanced as well. Now let's take a closer look at general fund revenues. The blue column again represents adopted budget, green is revised budget. The TOTO hotel tax is the city's largest revenue source. And these revenues are performing higher than expected, and projected to increase by 370,000, which is incredible, and it is due to increased tourism activity and recent initiative by the Chamber of Commerce to promote midweek business travel. The second-largest revenue category is sales and use tax, which includes M.J. sales tax that elapsed this March. However, we will receive, we will continue receiving allocations for M.J. through the rest of the fiscal year. Based on discussions with the serious sales tax consultant, Money Services, it appears that the local sales activity... that the local sales activities remain strong, and the sales tax are also showing very nice increase of 186,000. The next largest category is a property tax, and you can see very nice increase of 445,000 here. Again, this is based on information, the most recent information provided by the county collector's office and the receipt of the excess EREF rebate that we just recorded, it was 203,000 that we, we just recorded in this category, and it was originally unbudgeted. Other revenue category also showing increase of close to 51,000. This is based on the increase in popular beach parking revenues, which is also a result of high tourism activity, very nice weather, like it is today, and increased enforcement. And finally, the charges for services reflect increase in police service revenues of 30,000, which is based on year-to-date receipts and increase in issued parking citations. Altogether, general fund revenues are going up by close to 1.1 million, which is a great news and quite a remarkable indication of city's financial health. Now let's talk about general fund expenditures. During the mid-year review process, we included all previously approved budget amendments that were brought to council year-to-date. We will not be spending much time talking about these amendments tonight, as they were previously approved by you, but they described in attachment four to staff reports if you want to use it as a reference. On this slide, you can see the general fund budget increased by 200, well, close to 208,000, and this is a result of these previously approved items, appropriation adjustments in city council, city managers, and city clerks departments. If you have any questions, I can talk specifically on these adjustments, but again, they are all presented in attachment four. Staff is also requesting the following personnel changes. Reclass of senior management analyst to, existing senior management analyst position to associate engineer position. Addition of the assistant engineer position, addition of the executive assistant position. If approved tonight, these positions are not expected to be filled before June based on our recruitment process. So the incremental salaries and benefit cost for the remainder of the fiscal year will not meet the threshold for budget adjustment. So tonight, we are not requesting budget appropriation for these positions for this current fiscal year, but we are requesting these positions, these personnel changes as a matter of position control. Additional information on these positions are presented in attachments six one, six two, and six three in your staff reports. Now to conclude the analysis of the city's general fund, let's take a look at the estimated general fund balance projected through the rest of the fiscal year. I know this slide is a little bit busy, but there are only a few points I just wanted to bring your attention to. Please keep in mind that the beginning fund balance was adjusted to 9.5 million to reflect the audited balance at the fiscal year 15 close. The council previously adopted policy to commit 30% of operating expenditures as a contingency reserve, and this is in addition to other commitments to MGA in Main Street Beach. These contingencies remain unchanged at mid-year. And after taking all this committed reserves, the city will still project a very healthy, nearly 3.7 million unassigned general fund balance at the end of fiscal year 16. You can see the red line on your slide that shows this. And I just want to point out that, pointed out that this increase, this number represents a close to 1.8 million increase over the adopted fiscal year budget. And again, this is a result of two factors, the revenue projections that we just discussed, and the higher starting point at the close of fiscal year 15. And overall, the total general fund balance of 9.2 million represents 90% of this red circle, again on your slide, of general operating expenditures, which is beyond healthy and by far exceeds GFOE standards and guidelines. Now let's take a look at non-general fund revenues that are projected to increase by 592,000 or 3.4% over the adopted budget. 520,000 of this have been already approved by you as the previously approved items, and again, they're listed in attachment four. There are two revenue amendments that we are requesting tonight. The first one is increase of 34,000 in sewer capital fund. This is a one-time revenues from redemption of antiquated sewer bond. We already received it. We are not anticipating to continue receiving it every year, so it's a one-time revenue. And the second adjustment is an increase of 38,000 in restricted measure A Fund, Fund 12, which is directly tied to overall increase in sales tax. The non-general fund expenditures are projected to increase by 1.4 million or 7% over adopted budget, and nearly 1.1 million of this increase, again, have been, has been approved by the council already and presented in attachment four. The items that we're asking for your approval at this time are listed on the next slide. This is five appropriation adjustments that we are requesting for your approval tonight. The first one is allocation of 60,000 in streets and roads capital fund, Fund 11, for sidewalk assessment and repair project. You've heard presentation earlier today on results of the citywide sidewalk assessments, and although the policy, sidewalk policy language still needs to be developed, these additional funds will cover the repair of immediate hazards that were identified in the survey. The second item is allocation of 125,000 in park facility fund, Fund 17, for new emergency coastal trail erosion capital project. Again, the council discussed it, I believe, at the last council meeting, and staff will be bringing this item back in, on a future agenda item, item. But we are asking for budget appropriation for this tonight. The next item is allocation of 68,000 for, for the new capital project in park facility fund for the emergency repair of Coneyada Verde stairs. This project has been already completed, but we are requesting budget appropriation. Obviously, it wasn't budgeted, it was emergency repair, so we are requesting for budget appropriation today so we can properly record the expenditures. Next item is appropriation of 95,000 in police service cops grant fund to fund police overtime costs associated with additional enforcement and extra coverage for annual youth summit. And finally, additional appropriation of 11,000 in public facilities fund 48 to fund an increased cost of the public meeting device project. So this project was originally in the CIP budget, just the cost went up a little bit higher. And I'd like to refer you to attachments six four through six eight to your staff reports where you can find the one-page document for each of these items with additional information, including request summary, driving factors, cost, and overall impact on the organization. If all the changes that we've discussed so far are approved by you tonight, here's the projected citywide balance summary across all funds. The city currently has 24 different funds. All of them are grouped in these five categories. But you can find additional information on any individual fund in attachment five to your staff reports. And based on the slide, you can see that city fund balances across all funds are projected to be close to 82 and a half million. I just want to bring your attention to the notes on the slide, just to point out that these are not cash balances. These numbers include land assets for beachwood and glen tree properties, as well as capital assets in sewer and vehicle and equipment funds. So if you take this out of the equation, the cash balances are projected to be about 45.6 million, which is also remarkable and quite higher than the adopted budget. To summarize everything we've discussed so far, the fiscal year 2015-16 budget continues to be on track. Citywide revenues increased by, well, close to 1.7 million or 5.3% over the adopted. General fund revenues project a very healthy 7.5% increase to 1.1 million. Again, we discussed that these changes are due to favorable economic condition and high tourism activities. The citywide expenditures increase by 1.6 million or 4.6% over adopted. And this is a result of impact from previously approved council actions, as well as additional appropriation of 359,000 that we are requesting tonight to fund five items that we discussed earlier. And finally, the revised general fund, undesignated fund balance projects a very healthy increase of 1.8 million, which is again, combination of two factors, higher starting point, starting fund balance at the close of fiscal year 15, and increase in revenues that we discussed as part of this mid-year analysis. To conclude my presentation, I would like to spend a few minutes talking about the upcoming fiscal year 1617 budget and the budget process itself. Finance staff is working closely with the city manager and all department heads right now to develop factors and assumptions for the new budget. And this year, we are doing something a little bit different as we are working on implementation of the modified zero-based budget methodology that is commonly used in other cities and local governments. As part of this methodology, we will establish a base budget that will reflect the current service level and/or service or program level. So it's not going to be a line item budget, it's a service level budget. We will then develop the base budget revenues and expenditure assumptions, and examples of these assumptions are listed here on the slide. It could be known salaries and benefits increases, or culprits rates, MAU provisions, and some inflationary adjustments. Then we will determine surplus or deficit, well, in this case, it's going to be surplus, we can pretty much guarantee that. And after that, we will develop decision packages for service enhancements or reductions, depending on how it fits in organization. Each department will rank decision packages based on their priorities, and then the city manager will rank these prioritized decision packages citywide to be included in fiscal year 1617 budget for your, for you to, for your consideration. And I just want to note that staff recommendations for service enhancements or reductions will be based on many factors, not just cost. This will include strategic vision, staffing capacity, and overall impact on city operations and service to the community. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, and my general takeaway is that we're really healthy financially, and...
Yes, we are.
It's always a better presentation to receive, and I'm sure it's a better presentation to deliver. So that's great news for our community. Comments from council?
Thank you for displaying this so clearly, and your explanation verbally, but also in the staff report, it's excellent. And it's always even better to have such great news that we even beat expected trends. So it's been absolutely fabulous year, and good weather has a lot to do with it. People coming over here, and they've discovered us too. But this is excellent, how you've got everything organized. Thank you.
I agree with the mayor and council member, but I think more important is it shows we're putting our revenues back into the community where we're supposed to be doing. We're not a savings account, as I've said before. I think that's the most important. We bring revenue in as a municipality, and we spend it for better services and infrastructure for our citizens and visitors. So thank you for that. And if I may, I could move to adopt the attached resolution to adjust the fiscal year 2015-2016 operating and capital budget.
A motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. So discussion, my comments are as follows. So I'm in support of, support of this, and I just want to share that I did spend a good amount of time today discussing this item with Vice Mayor and City Manager today because it includes some adjustments to city staff, budgeted positions. And we, we all, we had consensus, we, I just wanted to share the views that she shared in the meeting, that we, we support that, and that we, we think it's the right thing to do for the city. However, we want to be mindful going forward, we think these are correct, but we want to be very careful in making decisions like this going forward, adding staff, making sure that, that we do that very carefully. You want to add staff slowly so that we don't outgrow financially our ability to pay for those positions. But these positions are very much needed, and I'm in support of them, and I'm in support of this revised budget. So I have a motion and a second. I want a roll call vote because it's money. Roll call vote, please.
I know we don't have any speaker cards, but we may want to briefly open and then close public comment, just to be procedurally above board.
I'm sorry. I didn't know I was having a hearing. I'm opening for public comment. I have no speaker cards. I am closing public comment. Thank you very much for the clarification, and apologize for my misstep there. I didn't see public here, so I apologize. The, is there a, so a motion and a second? Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Motion carries three zero. And moving on to our final item of the evening, landscape maintenance for medians, Highway 1 and 92. Thank you for your excellent staff report, by the way. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Kojikian, Deputy City Manager. The item before you this evening is the landscape maintenance for the medians on Highway 1 and Highway 92. I'm going to be going through a quick oral report back to this council. So really quickly, back in December 2014, city staff released a request for proposal for landscape maintenance of our medians on Highway 1 and Highway 92. We had three bidders that were responsive for the bid. The lowest responsible bidder at the time was Scapes Landscaping. They entered into the, entered into a one-year contract with the city for landscape maintenance, and that contract expired back in February of this current year. This item was presented to the City Council back on January 19th of this year. As a consent item, it was pulled off consent by the council for further discussion. At that meeting, council gave direction to staff, or approved a contract with Scapes Landscaping for an additional two years to the contract as it, as it was in the agreement. But there was conditions that came along with that, and that was that herbicides and pesticides shall not be used to complete the landscape maintenance of our highway medians. Council further directed staff, because there was a question about just the rate of pay, they, Scapes Landscaping has kept, as their proposal and their agreement was, to submit an invoice for $1,825 a month for their services. And with that, the council directed staff that they wanted to keep the same rate, but have the services include not using herbicides and pesticides. Since that meeting, staff met with Scapes staff to discuss the approved agreement by the council, but with the conditions. And feedback received from Scapes Landscaping was that they would be unable to complete the work at that rate. So staff went and did additional research regarding herbicides and pesticides and made contact with San Mateo County Agricultural, Agricultural Commissioner's Office, which is the local enforcement branch of the California Environmental Protection Agency, CAL EPA, and the Department of Pesticide Regulation. Staff spoke... for, and the Department of Pesticide Regulation. Staff spoke with the staff biologist who provides information to ensure that pesticides, herbicides are applied safely and effectively to protect the environment and those who apply the materials. And so it was just interesting. I was able to learn a lot more about herbicides and pesticides and how it works in the government agencies and all the regulations that we comply with, and so it's great working with our public work staff. So they, you know, it's, it's great hearing from our maintenance workers and our public work superintendent, as well as county staff as well. So by definition, a pesticide is any substance or mixture of substance which is intended to be used for defoliating plants, regulating plant growth, or for preventing, destroying, repelling, or mitigating any pests which may infest or be detrimental to vegetation, man, animals, or households, or be present in any agriculture, non-agriculture environment whatsoever. So in speaking with the biologists, plain and simple, an herbicide is anything that will kill a plant, and this could be defined as even boiling hot water. If you poured boiling hot water on a plant, that is considered an herbicide. And so what it came down to is as part of the conditions that the council approved at the meeting on January nineteenth, the only alternative to maintain the medians would be by handpicking or weed whacking, and that would be a considerable expenditure, and so we wanted to bring that back to the council. So before you this evening, staff was looking for a direction, is looking for a direction on a preferred landscape maintenance service option for the medians on Highway one and Highway ninety-two. So as is stated in the staff report, there were three options to consider. One is you could approve a two-year extension with Scapes Incorporated to provide landscape maintenance for the medians on Highway one and ninety-two. That allows the use of EPA-regulated pesticide herbicide spot spray, so continue the contract agreement that was originally agreed upon without the conditions. The second option would be is to direct staff to issue a request for proposal for landscape median maintenance by handpicking slash weed whacking of weeds to perform maintenance without the usage of any herbicide or pesticide. And then the third option would be direct staff to issue a request for proposal for landscape median maintenance using EPA-regulated organic pesticide herbicide spot spray. So I could go into the details of each of those options, as was stated in the staff report, but depending on council's preferred option, the fiscal impact can range from the one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars a month that Scapes proposed, or to potentially two times that amount for handpicking. So one other item that I'd like to note to the council is that to exercise options two and three, an RFP process needs to be completed to have the exact pricing in the maintenance. Now, I just had some informal quotes for those other numbers. So this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the world's fastest presentation on medians. Appreciate that very much. Even though it's after eight forty, I am happy to continue with our meeting. So bring it back to council. Any questions or discussion?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, you know, this is a small parcel of land. It's not five hundred acres out.
It is exactly, it's exactly thirty-five thousand seven hundred square feet of area.
Right, and so we're talking of a permitted licensed operator with a five-gallon backpack to go in there to save us thousands of dollars to spot check these weeds, regulated by the county of San Mateo, state of California, and our federal government. So I'm very comfortable to make a motion on option one to approve a two-year extension with Scapes Incorporated to provide landscape maintenance for the medians of Highway one and Highway ninety-two in Half Moon Bay that allows the use of EPA-regulated pesticide and herbicides for spot spray. I so move that motion.
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
Discussion. I know there's interest, interest in the other city council members who are not present tonight, and I share some interest in wanting to understand organic pesticide options. Alex, in your workings with, with Scapes, is there an organic option that is feasible within the current budget, or is there not?
So in my dealings, I did not work directly with Scapes on the organic pesticides. I felt that it would be more appropriate to work with Agriculture Commission, with the county, as to what would be the proper EPA-regulated organic herbicides to be used. The two most common organic herbicides to be used are clove oil or a citrus-based application as well. And so with that, there's a couple things. These are more, these are more potent in their, in the application, so basically, for the applicator itself, it can be more harmful, so they have to really be equipped and prepared to handle that more potent application material. And then also, you're going to have to continually use it over and over again because you have to use more of it because it doesn't go all the way down deep into the roots, and so what I've been told by, I own the staff biologist, that you have to continually applicate it. It is effective, but you just have to
Let's slow down for this part.
Okay.
That's good. So this is, because this is really important. So, so usage, said if we're, make sure, make sure I understand that it's more potent, and I guess I don't understand, and then you would have to use more of it. So is that correct?
Because it's not as effective as what you would get for the typical EPA-regulated herbicides. So you have to use more of it, even though it might be that, that more potent, you just have to apply more of it to be effective.
I understand. Okay.
But that's more potent, you know, when you look at it to the applicator as well. Yeah, for the applicator. Yes.
I see. So because the volumes are higher, it becomes dangerous to the applicator, and it's not as dangerous to the plants. So
Correct.
Okay. Well, hold me count. All right.
So you have to apply it more.
So you have to use a lot more of it. So it's, so the individual then becomes at risk even though the, the plants are not as at risk.
But there are procedures to follow, so, you know, they can
Of course.
Yes.
Okay, and then for the motion on, basically on option one, the herbicides, pesticides are regulated by the EPA. Can you explain that a little bit?
So I'll, so as a, as a government agency, we have to have a pesticide control advisor who's regulated, you know, they're all licensed by the state of California, and so it's almost like they're, they're basically writing the prescription, or the, or the doctor as to how you're going to apply and what mechanism, at what times, and what you can use. Most of these, well, all these EPA-regulated herbicides, I've been told by the biologist over with the county, is that they're very strictly regulated and that there's been a lot of research done to them, even more so than a lot of the organic products that are out on the market.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, thank you, Alex.
Yeah, so there's a, an act in, in Washington under US EPA called FIFRA, Federal Insecticide Rodenticide Act, and all the materials have to be tested prior to being released, and it's on the label of all the materials, what is required for protective clothing, goggles, gloves, and then a reentry period, but most of all the materials now, reentry used to be days, and the materials are adjusted properly now where there's almost reentry immediately, so you don't have to wait three days to reenter into the area. So that's why I'm really comfortable with this method of keeping the weeds down, and also hopefully, when the plant materials grow larger and larger, it does stuff out a lot of the other material, weeds invasive products that get in there. So I think you all end up using less over a period of time when your, your landscape is, is fully grown to capacity.
And my final question, thank you, Councilmember Mueller. My final question, Alex, is around appropriate, is it, are these appropriate for use in the coastal zone?
So as part of working with the County Agricultural, Agricultural Commissioner's Office, so, you know, working with, working with them, and then also the pesticide control advisor, we follow exactly their recommendations and their documentation, and so if they are approving that, then that is my understanding, that that would be okay in this, in this location.
Great. Thank you. With that, I would like, appreciate the clarification. So my concern and my questions were around making sure that we've fulfilled the intent of when we pulled this item originally, which was to make sure we examine, if not embrace, an organic option, if one was viable, and it sounds like that is not the most viable approach, and that the current approach, or the approach under the motion is a safe approach, and that all, providing all procedure, proper procedures are followed, and so I can accept that. So I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries three zero. The last item is, are there any items for future discussion or possible agenda items? Hearing none, I conclude tonight's meeting. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending.